We now call the meeting to order. If you could please pay attention to Councilmember Ortiz for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise if you are able.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you. We thank you for our city. We thank you for all that you've done and all that you're going to do. And Lord, we ask that you go with each and every individual and citizen in Topeka and wrap your loving arms around them. Lord, there's pillars in our community that have passed away this week. Reverend Anderson at the Mount Carmel Baptist Church. We ask that you be with the Mount Carmel Church and his family, and also Los Siesta, Connie Herrera and their family, and Courtney Grayson's mother, who was a big pillar, and she was a basketball referee for Topeka High. Lord, there's just a lot of death going around, and Lord, I just ask that you just touch them in a mighty way. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now proceed to the roll call.
Mayor de Lisa?
Here.
Councilmembers Keller?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Unless?
Here.
Thank you. We now proceed to the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Jeff Cohen, Grand Crest, the King Catholic Church, an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 9, 45150, at seat concerning those prohibitions. B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of June 30 through August 4, 2018, and enumerating said expenditures therein. C, our minutes of the regular meeting of August 14, 2018, and there are no applications.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lesser. We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to the action items. Item A, Downtown Plaza Agreement. If the clerk would read.
A is approval of Amendment 1 to the Development Agreement with the Downtown Topeka Foundation, City of Topeka Contract Number 45866, in relation to the Downtown Plaza Project.
Deputy City Manager.
Madam Mayor, Governing Body, thank you. What we're asking for tonight is approval of an amendment to an agreement that's already been approved by the body. Won't go into too much background, but just briefly, so everyone kind of understands how we got to the place where we're at. As you know, the body has approved an allocation of about $3.4 million, I think, to help fund the plaza project, and that was due to the extension of the 1% excess tax. So the body approved that allocation in 2015, contingent upon the development of a development agreement, which was done in April of last year. Subsequent to that, we've been working with staff internally and also with a number of folks who are in the audience this evening to make sure we're all in understanding of what each of our roles and responsibilities are. And to that end, the city manager this weekend sent out a couple documents for you that he has signed and executed. Those documents included a ground lease, which allows the Plaza Group to build approximate to our parking garage, between the alley and our parking garage, approximately to the plaza, and then another document that spells out each of our roles and responsibilities related to infrastructure improvements and ongoing maintenance at the plaza. Over the course of our conversations, we recognized that there were a couple things in the original agreement that everyone would like to see amended, and so we're presenting those tonight for your approval. Very specifically, those are three things, and those are redlined in your agenda, but I'll outline them here for you very briefly. Excuse me. The first is in Section 4 of the original agreement, which the original agreement specified that the Plaza would enter into an operational agreement with Visit Topeka. That's been amended to just say that they'll issue RFQ, Request for Qualifications, to select the best possible person, entity to run the plaza. May or may not be Visit Topeka, but everyone felt it was best to put that out for RFQ. The second one is basically adjusting a project timeline to better coincide with the presentation that the Downtown Foundation did to you here a couple months ago, in which they indicated when they thought the project might be done. And then the third change is, again, a termination agreement in the original, or some termination language in the original agreement. It was a bit unclear, but it certainly could have been read, that the project could have been terminated upon the building being complete, rather than the funds were all allocated. And so this just clarifies that language, so that the Plaza Group gets their entire distribution as appropriate. So those are some very brief comments from me. This time, Madam Mayor, with your permission, I know Kurt Young from the Foundation Board would like to come forward and just offer a few words of support for this amendment.
Absolutely. Mr. Young, please join us.
Kurt Young, Board Member on the Downtown Topeka Foundation Board and currently chairing the Design and Construction Committee for the Foundation, and still serving as the Executive Director of the Topeka Lodging Association. I'm going to restrict my comments, basically, to the first portion of this amendment, the termination paragraph, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, and the project completion paragraph, I think, is self-explanatory. Just when this dream for a plaza took roots back in 2014 with the Lodging Association, there were a lot of decisions that were made along the way regarding the future operation, management and operation of the plaza. They were very well thought out at that time with what we knew about a plaza and how it should operate. We partnered with Vince at DTI and with Brett at Visit Topeka very early on, and without their participation and leadership, this, we would probably not be here today. Over the last couple of years, as this dream has approached reality, we have become more educated in what a plaza should accomplish and the level of technology that it will take to operate a successful plaza. We have realized that our own original ideas, while sound at that time, may well need to be improved upon to make this the absolute best plaza in the region. Simply stated, we're spending about $9.6 million to build a plaza, and we have a duty and a responsibility to every citizen and donor to execute, or to exhaust, every opportunity to ensure that we have made the right decision when it comes to the management and operation of the plaza. The operational plan that Brett and his staff prepared nearly two years ago has played a very vital role in the actual design process of the plaza. It will also be used as a tool in the evaluation process of any responses to the RFQ in the end, and the end decision may well be that a local entity is still the best candidate for the management of the plaza. If a management company is retained to actually manage the plaza, both VTI and DTI will be intimately involved alongside that company to facilitate what is best for our plaza. This RFQ process will provide invaluable information from venue professionals across the country, and we are expecting to learn even more about plaza management and operations from this process. The most important factor of all in all of the Foundation's considerations is that we only get one chance to do this right, and this change in the original language to allow this RFQ process will help us accomplish that. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of these items, and if I can't answer them, I probably have a host of people behind me that can help, so.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any questions from the body? Councilwoman Ortiz.
How you doing? Thank you, Madam Chair. The RFQ, it sounds like you're trying to hire somebody, is that correct? Is that to manage it, or?
Manage, yes. Manage and operate, possibly operate. The process will give us the information to help decide what we ultimately do, whether we hire a management company that reports to someone here, whether they perform the operation, or they hire people here to perform the operation. It really is just an extension of the process to help clear up just how we can most effectively manage and operate the plaza.
And where would the funding come from to pay that person?
The funding is all being provided through one of two sources. The T-bid money that you all approved at some time in the past is going to provide a portion of the funding for that, and then whoever manages and operates the plaza is also going to have to generate revenue from sponsorships, from activities taking place on the plaza, whatever. But they're, part of their responsibility will be to generate revenue, because the T-bid will not provide 100% of the revenue. But the short answer to your question is the funding will all be coming from the management and from the T-bid.
Well, I thought the T-bid was for us to go out and bid on different events to bring them to.
No, that's the bid fund with Visit Topeka.
Oh, the bid fund. What does the T-bid do, then?
The T-bid was established primarily solely for funding the operation of the plaza, but it was never intended to.
So the bid, I'm thinking of the bid that, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It was never intended to provide 100% of the funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hillary?
I just wanted to follow up, because I'm not sure she understands yet what you're, the RFQ, you're really talking about a two-step process, correct?
Yes.
The RFQ to get a request for qualifications and learn what they think should be in your, in your, in your later request for applicants or request for folks who would want to bid on actually being our contractor.
Exactly.
Okay.
Councilwoman Claire?
So let me understand, we are just being asked about the amendments, right? Nothing else in here? Everything else has been done, approved, approved?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Claire, that's correct. It's just those four items from the original agreement are being amended this evening.
Can you tell me, and this is for you, Mr. Gerbert, how much it says that we're, the city, it's at our cost to design, bid, and construct and install public utilities? Do we know about what that's going to cost?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Claire, we have an estimate, and at this point, it's just an engineer's estimate, but we estimate for stormwater, water, and sanitary sewer utilities in the project area will be approximately $300,000. The estimate's a little south of that, but 300's a good number.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, it was the pleasure of the body. Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I really appreciate all the work that you, your team, and all the folks out there that are trying to make this a reality. This has been a dream of this community's 10, maybe even 20 years, I think, predating a lot of the work that the mayor and I did, so kudos to excellent work. With that, I'm happy to make a motion.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Jensen. We have a second by Councilwoman Hiller. Do we have additional comments or questions?
Just wanted to make a comment about the.
Yes, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Communication secondhand to City Manager, who's not here this evening, and to you all, I did read through the contracts as well, and I, too, appreciate the work that you all have done since we got on this train, and how professional it's been, how thorough it's been, and the, those, what was it? One of them's 36 pages and one's 19 pages with all the detail about the arrangements between the city and the Downtown Topeka Foundation, and I think they look great, so.
Well, we are trying very hard not to leave any stone unturned in this process, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to Item B, Resolution of 2018 Governing Body Meeting. If the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, canceling the Governing Body meetings on October 16, 2018, and November 6, 2018, and convening a meeting on October 23, 2018.
Deputy City Manager.
Madam Mayor, thank you. This action item before you is maybe the least complicated resolution that you've had in a while. It's one whereas and a couple resolves, and basically does what the clerk said. It cancels two meetings. The first of those, October 16, in which a large number from this body, as well as myself and the manager, will be at the inner-city visit, and then also canceling the meeting for November 7, which is, as we know, for Tuesday in November, Election Day, and then actually convening a meeting on October 23. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion by Councilmember Emerson. We have a second by Deputy Mayor. If there's no additional questions, we now proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with Item C, the Special Committee of the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Ordinance Report.
C is action regarding the final report due on September 1, 2018, for the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Ordinance.
Councilmember Ortiz.
That's me.
Oh, no, sorry. Deputy Mayor.
Hello.
Hello.
So as we discussed last time, we put our efforts on hold, waiting our teammates in the Public Health and Safety Committee, so that hopefully we can merge together and work as a team to carry out the rest of this work.
Wonderful. So that is your current report?
Yes.
And at this point in time, there is no need for approval for this report? So we would, if there is no other comments or questions from the body, Councilwoman Claire.
So I guess my question is, if this is the final report, what does that mean? It's not the final report?
It's not the final.
It's not the final report. I think that what was, what was established in the initial motion was that by this point in time, the committees were going to have a report for the body. It doesn't preclude them from needing more time.
Yeah.
But didn't we, at one point in time, put in policy procedure of something that there's only so many meetings and then you have to be done?
City Attorney?
No, the last, sorry, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Claire, September 1 was the date that the final report was supposed to be submitted, which is kind of odd, because we, we had kind of wanted to wait until the September 4 meeting, so that Councilwoman Ortiz would have been able to get her Public Health and Safety Committee meeting in. So that's why we put it on this week's agenda. I think perhaps we should either just defer these reports until September 4, and then maybe put an action item on the agenda to accomplish what Council, or Deputy Mayor Jensen was talking about, as far as combining the two committees, the five council members and the five community leaders.
Councilwoman Claire.
But at one point, we were, because I made the motion, I remember, instead of it being six months' time, when you had to have, if it was sent to the committee, you don't have an unlimited amount of time to finish something in committee. And no, and at one time, no, because I know we changed.
Well, Councilwoman Claire, I know that we, we've always celebrated the fact that the committees are not a place in the City of Topeka that things go to die at, because what you typically have is that things really get worked on and we come back. The six-month mark is that if something gets voted no, then you cannot bring it back to the council for six months, but there is no limit to the time that you could work something on committee.
I'll have to check that. Okay, so number two is, I don't see the pedestrian, what is it? The pedestrian traffic and pedestrian safety ordinance connecting with camping. We're talking pedestrian, we're talking camping. And I've talked to some of the, oh, the Homeless Task Force, people that are on the Homeless Task Force, and they're really concerned about putting the two together. They don't think that's a good idea, because, number one, you're talking about pedestrian safety and camping, two different things.
If I could, I know that Deputy Mayor would like to respond, but prior to that, Councilmember Hiller has been very patient, waiting, and she had her hand up.
That's okay. Thank you. This is an action item, and, and so I think my, my reading of it was that we had to do something, and I think that with, with Councilmember Claire's questions, what we did do was we set date certain by which you had to report back. You didn't have to be done, but you did have to report back, and if we have a September 1 deadline for this committee, then we need to at least extend to the 4th, if not farther. And I think that's what I was reading in our instructions for this evening, and then if we wanted to take action about combining them, we could do that as well this evening. Okay.
Correct.
So I don't know if, if September 4 is what is all you wanted at this point, to get it past that other meeting, fine, or if it should be longer, I'm supportive of whatever, as long as you're working, get the time you need to work.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I have a motion prepared to do that, however, it's premature until after Councilwoman Ortiz has a chance to deliver her remarks. My committee's already, already delivered its report to this body. We did that several weeks ago, and it hasn't changed. At that time, we indicated that we intended to delay further action until we could work the two committees together. The reason we want to combine is because working on the fallout of folks that are displaced by either ordinance is essentially the same. If you're displaced from panhandling, if you're displaced from camping, that's a team effort that the entire community has to come together to resolve. It doesn't matter why you're displaced, it only matters that you're displaced, and that aspect is what the committees, at least my hope is, would partner on to solve. The actual ordinances specifically, I do agree, it's not appropriate to combine discussion of those, which is what we had hoped that the other team would have time to finish discussing, because they are two totally separate things, I do agree. But at the end of the day, people that are displaced are going to need someplace to go, and that's what we're trying to do, is sort out, if you're camping, why is that, and is there a place you can go? If you're panhandling, why is that, and is there a work program we can, we can set up to help you change?
Councilwoman Claire.
We've got to remember, we're not talking homeless. We're talking camping. Big difference. If you address the homeless population and help them and send them, which we do, that does not necessarily solve the camping issue. It's the camping issue, not what to do with the homeless or the displaced. We already have that in place. We're talking just camping, the ones that just want to camp. They don't need help, they don't want help, they're camping. That's what we're talking about.
If I could respond?
Deputy Mayor.
So you are correct, and that's the ordinance aspect, but there are folks that do camp because they're homeless and they have no other option. I mean, there, there's two groups of people here. I wholeheartedly agree. There's the folks that choose that lifestyle, and there's the folks that are forced into that lifestyle. We have the same issue with panhandling. There's the folks that choose that, and there's the folks that are forced into that. So it's not appropriate for us to use the heavy hand of government on the folks that don't have a choice there. I wholeheartedly agree with you. If you're choosing to camp, that's a whole other issue. Those are the folks that, that need to be told, you know, it's, it's time to move on. But we can't swing the heavy hand of government on the folks that this is their only option until we make sure that we have a program in place, that there is capacity for restroom mission, that we do have a wet facility if they're alcoholics. There's a whole host of other things that are going to happen because of this, and our goal in this larger committee is to put everyone together that is already working on it. The last thing we want to do is to duplicate services. If there's a program in place, is it able to handle the increased capacity that's, excuse me, probably going to get swamped with? The goal is to make sure that we have what we need in place before we come in and mandate all of these extra folks to that.
Councilmember Lesser, and then Councilwoman Claire.
The only other thing that I would add is, I do find it interesting, if, if the concern of the Homeless Task Force, if the main concern is the individuals who are, are camping and have other options, I don't understand why they would be against the lumping of them together, in essence, to address the issues that Councilman Jensen is, is discussing in, in view of the fact that the individuals are homeless, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lesser. Councilwoman Claire.
With my discussions with law enforcement, their issues are not with the, there's not as many issues with homeless camping, because those people get help. They're there, they're not there for months on end. They, we have help for them. It's the ones there, the issue that ones they're having problem with are the ones that don't want the help. What I understand, from talking to the task force and law enforcement, is there are more that don't want the help or have mental issues than there are homeless that camp. And so that's my, you know, really, maybe that's what we need to find out. You know, if we have 80 people camping and two are homeless, we have a camping problem. If we have 18 camping and 79 are homeless, then we've got the homeless problem. So maybe we really need to figure out what the problem is.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I could not agree more with you. You know, part of the reason why we want to pull these teams together is so that we can bring everybody in the community in and talk about that, because you're absolutely right. There are a number of folks that, that's, that's why, they're choosing to do it for one reason or another. But part of the larger discussion is to make sure that for the folks that need the help, we have the help, and for the folks that don't need the help, the, the law enforcement, our law enforcement partners in this community have the tools, they need to get that done. I wholeheartedly agree with you. Part of making the right decision here is fully understanding the problem as best we can. I don't quite think we're there yet, but part of the reason why we want to pull the teams together is so that we make sure we can hear from everyone and work together to pull in the same direction.
Councilwoman Claire.
I know it's not panhandling we're talking about. We're talking about pedestrian safety, and we have to figure out if those, if our reasons for the pedestrian safety is due to homeless. I mean, that's what we, we need to figure out. How do you know that? That our pedestrian safety is caused by homeless people?
I realize we're, we're getting stuck in this back and forth thing, but.
We are.
You're bringing up an awful lot of good questions here, and that's part of the reason why we're looking for some more time as a team to work together on this.
So may I suggest that, and this is just a suggestion, instead of, you know, because I know that there's going to be a request that the committees join, but would it be possible for us to have, to legal, this is my question, the two chairs of the committees have a meeting and maybe discuss information? I mean, I don't think it would break cora, because it's just two individuals that are two council members, we're not having serial communication, and then just sit down and then share basic information that they have before we come back to the next meeting, rather than having the discussion back and forth?
Correct, and they're on separate committees, so I think that, that makes it even more distanced. But I think perhaps what we need to do, though, is defer the final report to September 4 for special committee and defer the final, we're not there yet, but defer the final report for Public Health and Safety until the 4th, which will give Councilmember Ortiz the opportunity to hold her meeting. And then if we need to, if they would like to meet, and then we want to put an item on the agenda to combine the meetings, then the body can vote on whether or not that's advisable on the 4th. That would probably be a good route to go if that works. It's y'all's decision, but.
I would think that's fine. Should I do that in two separate motions or a single?
You can do a motion or ask for a motion to defer the final report to the 4th, but an action item can just be. an action item can just be placed on the agenda by the manager.
Councilmember Lesser.
The only other thing that I would point out that really could make this where it really doesn't matter, is, as Legal has shared with us, if there's an individual, if there's one person that's homeless, one person, and they do not have the willingness, all right, they do not have the ability to comply, then all, both these ordinance can be struck down as unconstitutional. So if there's just one person who does not have the ability to abide by the statute, then we have a legal problem, we have an issue anyway. So, whether it's, the majority of them are homeless, or the majority of them are not homeless, it really becomes irrelevant, because there only has to be one for there to be a legal challenge, and us not to have the resources in place to assist those people. So I think that's one thing that's important from a perspective legally, to keep in mind of why we're also looking at having these other options for those individuals who do not have the ability to comply with the ordinance.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
And Legal can probably explain it better than me, but we have to put things in place for us to pass this ordinance where it comes to the camping, which, where's Luther at? I thought I seen him coming in. Come on up here, Luther. Because we're maring off of, you might explain, you've memorized it better than me, but, and these are some of the steps that we have to do. That's why I've called in all the partners, because we have to put things in place before we can pass this ordinance, am I correct? Because we're maring off of...
Yes, that's what the legal department is recommending you do. In our research, what we did is, we looked at a lot of different cities around the country. Some of those cities are successful with their ordinances, and some of them are not. Some of them are challenged through civil litigation, that courts ultimately strike down their ordinances as being unconstitutional. What we've done is tried to write these draft ordinances based on the cities that are successful, that have been able to withstand challenges. And, in arriving at that, we looked at how they make their ordinances work, and that involves some kind of related services that go into it before the government is taking enforcement action and criminalizing an activity. That's where these things that are being talked about and discussed in the committees, like outreach teams and work programs, and shelter, emergency shelter alternatives, campgrounds, and things like that, those are all of those other kind of related services that are available, besides just taking an enforcement approach and trying to arrest your way out of a homeless problem. It's giving people alternatives. When those alternatives are refused, is when the enforcement piece of it kicks in, and there then can be a criminal consequence.
Your question was answered, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to make the body, we've heard that in our committee, and I wanted to make everybody aware of that. That's why we're taking our time. But not only that, you know, the public is looking at us, how can you pick on those poor homeless people that don't have anywhere to go, blah, 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 blah. So they're looking to see how we're going to treat them, what kind of empathy we have, and I think we all do have empathy for them, and the bottom, our bottom goal is, well, my bottom goal is to give them the help that they deserve.
If I could add one other thing, is, I've heard that a lot, and, but, the things that are being discussed is actually not intended to criminalize homelessness or penalize homelessness. It's actually helping to address the problem.
Right.
By creating all of these other services. We look at what services we have in place now.
Right.
What services we need to add.
Right.
And that additional effort.
Right.
Is what's coming out of this.
Right. And that's what I wanted to say, that we are trying to just move a step further and help that person, because we don't want to, you know, give them this hefty fine, you know, if we can help them be a citizen that they need to be, or we want them to be. Sometimes, people just get down on their luck, you know? There was, I think I mentioned this before, a gentleman that was, had medical issues, was in the hospital, was getting out, didn't have nowhere to go. Guess what he was going to do? He was going to camp. You know, so, we've got to set some things in place, and that's what we're looking to do. And we're looking at some of the entities that have stepped forward and say, we want to help, or we want to be a part of that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So Deputy Mayor, do we have a motion?
We do.
For deferral?
And I'll just sum up all these comments in one sentence. The goal of this is to help people. If it's a gentle nudge they need to get help, to get services, then, that's great. If it's a program to help them get back on their feet, that's great, too. The whole goal is to pull all of these people together in our community, and make sure that we give our fellow citizens the help they need, and if it's not help that they need, they just need to push, our goal is to push them to. We're trying to accomplish two things at the same time, and it's a heavy lift, but we've got the teams in place that can do that. And I'm incredibly proud to be part of them, and grateful for everyone who has joined us in this attempt to make a measurable impact in a difficult situation. For that, I will make the motion and yield back my time.
Motion to...
Motion to defer till the 4th.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for deferral, we have a second by Councilwoman Clear. Additional comments, I think, Councilmember Hiller?
Thank you. This is to defer just the final report on the pedestrian safety committee at this moment, correct?
Well, yes, that's fine.
The special committee?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that. Also, it strikes me, as this conversation goes around again, that I like the idea of coming up with the data. We have, we've swum around a little bit on who we're talking about, and if we don't already have it, it might be helpful on the 4th to have pedestrian safety, do we have a problem or not, and what is it? How do we define that? Panhandling, because it is a sub, it's an agenda here, do we have a problem or not? And of those, how many people are desperate, legitimately panhandling for survival? And how many are kind of wheeler-dealers, or whatever you would call the other group? So that we know what we're talking about, I think it was really a great idea. And then, for the camping, which seems to be clearer, as the committee is working on it, there would be maybe three groups. There's the desperate group, there's the group that's camping by choice, and then, of course, that's been, then there's recreational camping, which we aren't wanting to mess up with this ordinance as well. I think that'd be really helpful. And then, particularly, if we keep getting stuck, it just strikes me that we need to, maybe, a reminder that we can decide, a committee can report that they don't see a good solution right now, and so, they don't have a recommendation to move forward. We don't, just because somebody has an idea, and we talk about things, and I'm so glad that we're doing that. If we can't wrap our arms around it and come up with something that looks solid, it's okay to say, we're going to let it go for right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So we have, Deputy Mayor.
Could I ask a follow-up question to Councilwoman Hiller?
Yes, sir.
So I'm curious, in the data you're looking for, is there something specific you're trying to identify? And I'll preface my question by saying, to me, the why isn't so important, only what we're prepared to do about it. It doesn't really matter to me why they're panhandling, why they're there, as long as, if they're looking for help, we can give it, and if they're not, then we have the ability to say, well, you can't do it here, because you're increasing the danger to traffic. And for the traffic safety numbers, we can look at the crash data we have now, and it indicates that there's a higher risk of death or injury at those intersections. Do we need to wait until there's a death or injury to say, oh, yeah, well, that data indicated that common sense would dictate you shouldn't interact with cars there? Or is it just enough to say, we want to prevent future accidents by saying, you can't interact with traffic in busy intersections?
Councilwoman Hiller.
I just haven't yet heard any data that the pedestrian safety issues had anything to do with people stopping and interacting with vehicles. And so, I continue to have a problem connecting the two.
So if I could respond to that? So, is, do you have to have a concrete connection, or is it enough to say, common sense would dictate that in a busy intersection, you shouldn't interrupt traffic?
If it ain't broke, don't fix it, would be my, I thought, if that's not why people have had accidents, and they haven't been having accidents, either those who were soliciting, or people who were just crossing in the middle of the block without looking very well, or then, I don't see that we're fixing anything. I have trouble passing a law of any kind if there's not a good, solid reason for it, and a reasonable expectation that we're going to fix something, or prevent something, whatever, whatever our goal is.
So, you're absolutely right. The goal is to prevent future accidents in those areas, instead of wait for there to be a terrible accident, and then react to it, and say, oh, well, we could have done something that might have prevented it. I understand your comments about not wanting to pass unnecessary laws, but when it comes to preventing death or injury, that's different than waiting until death or injury occurs, and then reacting to that.
If, like, Topeka's 150 years old. If we haven't had problems with people crossing the street at intersections yet, I mean, we're talking about what could be a fairly involved and costly enforcement, and stressful enforcement mechanism for the pedestrian safety proposal, as it is now. And if there isn't a problem, we can't prevent everything, but if it really hasn't been a problem, why would we do it?
And so, I would respond by saying, I understand your comments. We can demonstrate that there are increased dangers at those intersections with the traffic data we have now. Whether or not those are caused by people on their smartphones, or people on the side of the road, they're still dangerous intersections, and adding an additional layer of danger to those seems like something we could easily solve with this, and help make people safer. I would offer that 150 years ago, there weren't cars, and 25 years ago, there weren't cellphones. And those are increasingly becoming more dangerous objects, as people interact more and more with them, and things get more and more distracting. So, I would say the least we can do to try and help prevent future injury, I think we should, a grade we can't do it everywhere and everyone.
I'm done.
Thank you. Great discussion. So, we have a motion to defer this to the 4th of September. If there's no additional comments, Councilwoman Clear.
One more. So, we could also look at the fact, maybe there's some parking lots that are dangerous. Maybe there's an intersection getting onto the highway that are dangerous. I mean, where do you stop, then? Do you make an ordinance, say, okay, you can't do this in a parking lot, because someone might get killed there, let's prevent that? Do you know, you know, so, if you're going to start this, this may be opening a can of worms where it's not broke, so I don't know if you need to start. That's, I'm done.
I have a quick answer. A quick answer for that, parking lots are private, so that's off the table right out of the gate. It's a private area, we can't regulate within that. We have traffic safety data, numbers, standard that has to be met in order for it to consider to be a dangerous intersection. Since you're absolutely right, it could be a slippery slope if we weren't doing this based on existing data that Luther had provided. So, you're correct. We can't just say, any intersection is dangerous, based on some arbitrary standard. We have a set standard, and anything above that is where we're considering we may need some additional regulation to help try and prevent future accidents.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second for a deferral for the 4th of September. Seeing that there's no comments, we're going to proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion has approved, we have a deferral. Now we proceed to item D, Public Health and Safety Committee. If the clerk would read.
D is Action Regarding Final Committee Report Due on September 1, 2018, from the Public Health and Safety Committee on the proposed camping ordinance.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, I'm not going to be as long as the Deputy Mayor there. We have a Public Health and Safety Committee meeting on Monday, the 27th, I'm trying to bring this up here. It's at 3 o'clock, and it looks like it's at the Holiday West Building. So we encourage everyone to come out, so we can continue our meeting. What we've done is, I've given everyone tasks, and I hope that they, I'll be calling them this week, to make sure that they come back with those tasks fulfilled. I'm waiting on a report from the homeless task force. I think they meet tomorrow, right, Corey?
Today.
You guys met today? Okay. They met today, and they had a proposal, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. Again, like I said, we're trying to line up things that we can help people, as opposed to hurt them, and we've got to receive several partners that are willing to step forward, because we're seeing mental illness, we're seeing medical, we're seeing homeless, homeless with children. So, we're looking, we're looking at all of that. I know that Deputy Mayor deferred his to September 4th. Can't I defer this until we're done, or for another six months, as opposed to coming back, coming back, or do I have to do it on the 4th?
Councilmember Ortiz, the governing body rules require that you provide a report every 90 days. So, if we do, I think at the last meeting, we talked about the August meeting needed to be concluded, so if on the 4th, you give a report, then the next report wouldn't be due until December 3rd, I think.
So I guess I can give another report, okay.
Prior to getting to a motion, we do have an individual signed up for public comment. Pastor Clark, if you could, please approach the bench.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me. It's a privilege, don't take it lightly. I'm just here, I serve as a local pastor in Topeka, East Topeka Love Fellowship Church, but I also sit on the board of the Human Relations Commission for the city. And, the discussion has been healthy already concerning, I want to get your language correct, the pedestrian and traffic safety ordinance, along with the Public Health and Safety Proposal for the camping ordinance. The Councilwoman already has said, right upon my arrival, she was speaking, to the separation of the two and not merging. I'm kind of here hoping that we can pull on the moral fabric, as we seek to make our city better. The homeless, let me be very clear from the outset, Pastor Clark is in no position to advocate for the homeless. I have a good friend by the name of Barry Fieker, who does a wonderful job with that, and my church does everything they can to support him and his work over there at Topeka Rescue Mission. However, the homeless problem that we are kind of trying to prepare for, I believe is connected to our revitalization efforts here in Topeka. Momentum 2022 is something we're all excited about. I'm an advocate, I'm a part of it. If you've seen the commercial, you see my face on there. I'm all for it, I'm gung ho. But another part of that we all are aware of is economic development. Downtown Topeka, while the city ordinance is for the entire city, downtown Topeka is kind of where the concentration for our economic development is hoped for, as we move forward. And the word that I want to leave with you all tonight, as we consider our homeless, and kind of what to do with them, and how to manage them in the camping, is aesthetics. That's really the word I came to present before you tonight. Aesthetically, I want to be very clear, I get it. I'm responsible for a local parish in East Topeka. I have a home where my wife and I reside with a family in East Topeka. We understand aesthetics, we understand it from a communal standpoint, we take pride in our communities, we want to make it look good. In downtown Topeka, the hope is that aesthetically, when we're bringing in hopefully multi-million-dollar clients, multi-billion-dollar persons to do business here in Topeka in the future, the homeless kind of hanging out in our downtown is just not aesthetically acute. And I recognize that. And so, the goal is, what do we do? How do we handle, how we put things in place, as Luther already stated, without legislating and making an ordinance to solve it, where a homeless person, probably nine times out of 10, can't afford to pay a citation for being in the wrong place at the wrong time with their homelessness. I get it. I'm hoping that we can have a larger conversation, though, about what to do with them, and how to manage it, and I know you all are already doing a wonderful job of trying to find solutions, and bringing solutions, because you're like Pastor Clark... had a campaign going on down there in their downtown where I was working as a student that said, please help, don't give. Where that came from was other, the generosity of the citizens in Nashville was so tremendous that the average person panhandling on the corners of Nashville from 9 to 5 was making more money than those of us who were going to work. Other cities got a hold of that. They started buying one-way tickets for their homeless in Phoenix, Charlotte, Atlanta, other places to go to Nashville. They were giving their homeless persons one-way tickets to leave their town, on the Greyhound or whatever, to get to Nashville, and you'll be okay. Nashville found out that's what was happening. Give me two, two, Nashville found out that's what was hap-
Sir, do you need, do you need an extra time?
Please.
A minute or two? Two minutes? Three minutes?
One minute.
Motion for an additional minute.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, please vote. I mean, proceed with the voting. Use of the hand.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voting yes. Proceed, Pastor Clark.
They would send their homeless there, Nashville found out about it. They said, they said, citizens of Nashville, help us, please help, don't give. I found that kind of oxymoronic, being a man of the cloth, because usually when you're helping, you're trying to give, and so that caught my eye. I just wanted to raise that to us, y'all. I think you all are doing a fantastic job. I know we're going to get it right. I know we're going to figure it out. I've already heard the discussion. It's already on the right train. I just wanted to make sure that we're continuing to have the discussion, and I wanted, I was told by another member of the community that the community citizens are more than available, that whatever groups and whatever think tanks are going to be formed, committees are going to be formed to get feedback from the community, grassroots type of community, that we will make ourselves available. I don't want to say any names, but I am a resource. You can contact me, my office, and we will be more than willing to help make sure that whatever needs, conversations need to be had, can be had as we present them to you all. That's all I want to say.
Thank you so much, Pastor Clark. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Pastor Clark, I will be calling on you because what I, what I see, let me leave you with this. Am I my brother's keeper? Yes, I am. And it's great that you're working with Barry Fieker, but he can only do so much. And his entity says they have rules. And one of the rules is if you're drinking or drugging, you can't stay there. You can't come. And I respect that. I respect him as a man of God, I respect that. But when we have citizens that are out there that are camping, and they meet that protocol, and we're needing a safe night to pay for that hotel, or we're needing a safe haven for them to try to get them sober, to get them on the right track, and that's what we're looking for. We're looking for those safe havens. And we're looking for people to come together to say, we as a body, as a body of Christ, will pay for him for that night. Because see, if he refuses, then guess what? He has to go to jail. See? So we can't put all that on Barry because he's doing the best that he can, and that's a lot of what's out there, is our drugs, our mental health, and our alcohol. And that's where we're looking for Valeo. But we're also needing the Christian popularity to step up and say, what can I do? Can I feed, can I feed them? Can I clothe them? Can I give them a ticket to go here, you know, across town or whatever? Because just like you talked about Tennessee, we have people all over that come to the mission. That's the word. You want to be fed? You want to be treated good? Go to Topeka's rescue mission, and they'll do everything to help you, house you. And I see that so long. I'm the representative of East Topeka. When we put in that spray park, I met so many people coming through, taking a shower at the spray park because they were headed to the mission. And so I understand where you're coming from, but it takes a village. It takes all of us.
Yes, ma'am.
To come to the table. So I'll look for you at our meeting, or I'll look for you to say, I will, I will step up to the plate, and to talk that talk, because that's what we need, because we don't want to put anybody down, we want to lift them up. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pastor Clark, thank you for your testimony here tonight, but you kind of left us hanging. Nashville, what happened? You know, they said, please help, don't give. So did it solve anything?
That's a wonderful question. The answer would be yes, because I think the citizens, for the most part, wanted to be in compliance with what the city was asking for. So yes, your heart of generosity is big, but it's creating a problem. So to help, to help solve the problem for the community, you'd really help us if you would stop with the, and you're, and I guess, and I would even maybe assume, their generosity was probably a little above average. You know, most of us are reaching into change tray, but you know, but maybe you're not helping us when you're overly generous because you're, so I would say it did help when people stopped giving. But as a, as a, as a man of compassion, even that notion, and of course, that possibly being explored as an option in the city where I'm now pastor, I'm trying to get ahead of it because I know that we're, we're going to be exploring options, and I'm hoping one of them is not, please help, don't give.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, reading the Bible, and I'm going to murder these words. It sounds like, you know, I was, when I was hungry and you fed me, I was making you, clothing me. And that's, yeah, that's what you want to naturally do for people.
Absolutely.
We might be creating more problems than we're solving. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pastor Clark, because without the snappy phrase, with that concept that Nashville is doing, is, without the snappy phrase, that concept that Nashville is talking about is something that I was introduced to when I was traveling. And I've talked about it some, particularly in Vietnam and Cambodia, where the whole countries were saying, don't give money to the beggars, support the schools, support the charities, support the Buddhist retreats that will take care of, that will feed them and clothe them and provide them a safe bed, but don't keep giving cash because it will, it will, so it's a matter of, for instance, if we were encouraging, people want to give, and that's wonderful, but if we were, for instance, encouraging people to give those dollars to Let's Help and to Doorstep and the Rescue Mission, and then referring, you know, rides is really, which meeting, whichever meeting it was I went to, rides to get to the sources that are safe for help is really the only piece that we're missing in Topeka. We could adopt a program like that, you know, work it up, learn from Nashville and so on.
Absolutely.
To not, to not fail to give, but to give generously, but make sure it wasn't just cash to go.
It's really good.
Someplace that wasn't going to be helpful to that family.
Instead of, may I respond? Instead of having maybe cash or change in your car, we go ahead and provide citizens with vouchers or whatever, some type of coupon, that's a really good idea.
Correct. Because in my district, people even come door to door, you know, and so being able to say, I care about you, this is where you can get help, I've supported that, whatever that resource is, might be something for us to consider and see if we could develop. I thank you so much.
That's a really good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate you mentioning aesthetics tonight. I'm happy to report that in our committee, we haven't talked about aesthetics at all. If aesthetics happen, that's a byproduct of helping people. And our focus has been, what can we do to improve the lives of the foes that are stuck in a bad situation? Is it a gentle nudge to get help? Is it finding someone who thinks they have no other option? Our focus has been, what can we do to help people with the aesthetics part? You know, that's a great side effect, but at the end of the day, this is an incredible opportunity for our community to come together and really try to help folks on either side of the issue that they're on. So I appreciate your comments tonight. They're well received, and I look forward to partnering with you and the rest of the folks in the community to really create a good solution that can move the needle in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Great discussion. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Here. Here.
Is there a motion that you would like to bring forth to the body?
I'd just like to make a motion, I guess, to come back on September the 4th, is that correct, legal? And I look for, I know I told Liz to send you guys the information that we receive, and I've been trying to get that to you guys before our meeting, and hope to see several of you there. But that would be my motion, is to come back on September 4th with another report so that we'll have time to talk to the entities that we've-
Okay, we have a motion. I think we have a second by Deputy Mayor Jensen. That being said, if we're ready, let's proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voting yes, the motion passes. There are no further items. We now proceed with announcements. Deputy City Manager. Actually, no, the, there's no preliminary agenda.
Two very quick announcements. If you've yet to turn in your survey regarding council chambers to our architect partners, please, just a friendly reminder to do that so they can incorporate your comments as they begin preliminary design of this space. And then secondarily, congratulations to Brendan Wiley and everyone at the zoo for another successful birth with another baby giraffe last night. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, my comments will be brief. I just want to do a, Councilwoman Lesser, just want to give a quick shout out over to Nikki Lee and City Manager Trout. As you see, they're not here. They are right now doing the Bloomberg Harvard program. It's been a lot of fun to see the pictures that are coming out and the excitement that is coming from them, so I look forward to all the great things that they're going to bring. So Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended Saturday night, one of the movies in Noto. There's probably about 100 people there. It was pretty awesome. So they'll have another one. It's the third Saturday at 8:00 to come out with family and friends. I think it's just awesome to encourage those businesses and also to see just good family fun, you know? I think that's, that's really, really awesome. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Today I participated in a, basically it was a photo shoot, which I do not have a face for, well, I have a face for radio, I've been told. So, but it was over at Houghton Park, and a serious thing, it was about, Topeka, as you may or may not know, is a semifinalist for the Encore Gen to Gen Prize, and basically it was worth $50,000, in this case, to Houghton Park High School for a pilot program that will pair high schools with people over the age of 50. So you're there?
Thank you.
Sure. But I had a fantastic time the other day, met three seniors over there and the principal, just fantastic people, as Ms. Ortiz is so fond of saying, it's great to be a Scot. So thanks for Molly Hadfield for arranging all that today.
Councilmember Parija.
I hate following him because it's difficult. I just want to remind everybody that all of us sit up here because of one thing, somebody voted for us to be here. And on the heels of the primary, I want to encourage everybody to keep informed of the candidates that are running in the general. And if you're not registered, get registered. It's easy to do. And plan on voting and take your family with you when you go vote. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Parija. I love the fact that you said that I'm going to jump in a little bit here, but one of the things that I've been planning on doing, I'm going to work with the League of Kansas Municipality to start a campaign, you and 10. So next time that you go to vote, consider the 10 people that you have around you that may not be inclined to doing so, help them get registered and take 10 people to the poll. Not partisan, but take 10. Deputy Mayor.
My lovely bride tells me our child is the size of an avocado going into Week 18. No, no, it's not necessary to give you a blow-by-blow report on everything, but just thought you all would like to know it's the size of an avocado. Apparently, that's good.
Can you bring one next week? Show us the joy.
I'm not a fan of fruit, but anyway, have a great week, everybody.
Councilman Mays. No avocados? Councilmember Cohen.
I don't have.
Councilmember Lesser.
I would, I'm thankful that Councilmember Jensen didn't give us a play-by-play of prior to the constant, but that being said, I wanted to thank Dr. Peak. Prior to Topeka West High School getting opened up, him and his department, we got the, had a real traffic issue, safety issue on turning, and over the end of the summer, they got that line remarked, got the curbs widened, so much safer for our students. So thank you so much for getting that done prior to the school. That's all I had.
Councilwoman Heller.
Just want to briefly celebrate the wonderful events at Grace Med last week, as well as the grand opening or the grand celebration of the Brown v. Board mural. Things are really awesome, things are happening in this community. That's it.
Councilwoman Claire.
Couple of things. So yes, I was watching Hope give birth to her calf, and my husband goes, what are you yelling at? And I said, I am being supportive here. Push, push. Ducks, September 15th, we are ahead, 64%, but I don't think city staff has joined us. So we sold 32 out of 50. And if you didn't attend the Harley party for Boys and Girls Club, 700 people did, and it was awesome, and Officer Mike Burns won the Harley. So that was cool. Thank God for rain. Happy with those days.
All right. We now proceed to public comment. The first person signed up to speak is Ms. Virginia Mendez.
I have four minutes, right?
Yes, ma'am, you have four minutes.
I've got everything outlined, so I'll try to get done in four minutes. There's a problem in my neighborhood. There's always a problem there. At 2240 Southwest Vosel Court, they're running a drug house. And according to Officer Matt Daniel, he thinks they're trafficking children from there, because I've been observing that kind of behavior. Something needs to be done about this because these people are shooting teenagers and children up with PCP. They're doing IV PCP. That puts the whole neighborhood in danger because I worked at the VA, and people who come in that are worked out on PCP, I mean, they become very homicidal, and their livelihood just line up and kill the whole neighborhood one day, and I'm more than sick of it. And I'm tired of the royal runaround. I called the Attorney General's Office. They say I have to work with the Topeka Police Department. Well, they've used this house at 2240 to harbor criminals. That's all they've done since they've moved in there about a year and a half ago. And I called Jason Dunderdale, who was our community police officer last year, and I told him that they were talking about getting high on drugs and mixing some more people like they did the kid over there on 15th Street last spring. He told me that I was drunk and on drugs all the time, and I'd been in jail, he didn't know how many times, and he started fooling with me. Well, none of that's true. I don't do drugs, I don't do alcohol, and I've never been in jail. So I don't know where he got that information, but it's just not true. Anyway, the cars come and go there all the time, just like they do in the drug house. It picks up over the weekend. I've got tag numbers and everything, and something needs to be done about this mess. And I've called the police numerous times to get something done, and nothing has happened yet. And like I say, I've observed them. And the lady there, when I called and saw them mainlining drugs in a car that was parked in front of that house, the lady that lived there came out and said, don't try to get that kid that was all confused in the middle of the street. I just gave him, or in the car, because I just gave him IV PCP. So that's where I got that information. She screamed it so everybody in the neighborhood could hear it. And they keep switching car tags. One day, there'll be, it'll be on one car that's parked there, the same tag number, and then it'll be on another one the next day. And the guy who the police caught on Sunday afternoon was there. I saw him from 4:30 on Saturday afternoon till 7:30 Sunday morning. They're harboring criminals there. It's getting pretty scary, the one that was involved in the murder on Taylor Street last Then yesterday, I called 911 because a lady pulled up there in one of those cars, and she started cursing at me, calling me all kinds of bad names, because I had reported them to SRS. Well, you darn well believe I, I'm a mandated reporter, and I called SRS about what's going on over there. And let's see, I don't know what more to do. I've tried everything. I guess tomorrow, I'm sure they're running a meth lab there. I can smell- reported them to SRS, well, you darn well believe I, I'm a mandated reporter, and I called SRS about what's going on over there. And, let's see, I, I don't know what more to do, I've tried everything. I guess tomorrow, I'm sure they're running a meth lab there, I can smell it, so I guess tomorrow, I haven't gotten any results from, with the Topeka Police Department, so I guess I'll call the KBI, maybe they'll get something done. But it, it, it's just terrible, I mean, you know, and it's, it's just a dangerous situation, what those people are doing. They're drugging little kids, there's two little twins that come over there, that, this night that I called the police about, uh, kids doing IV drugs in that SUV, these three little, three-year-old twins was running around, falling on the ground, so they'd apparently drugged them too. And then I called 911, the police got there, and they had lookouts posted, these people at this house, and when the police got there, they all ran in that house, and they wouldn't answer the door.
Ma'am, your, your time has expired, do you need additional time?
Yeah, one more minute.
One minute, do we have a motion? Councilmember Jensen has given a motion, Councilmember Ortiz has seconded, uh, we all proceed with the voting.
We have seven yes.
Seven having voting yes, the motion passes, Ms. Mendez, you have a minute.
Okay, so I, I, I don't know what more to do, I've, I've got tag numbers and all kinds of reports, but somebody said, call the community officer, well, he's on vacation until the 23rd. I called the guy that's, uh, Wilson, Officer Wilson, that they said to call, well, he's never returned my call, I, I'm just really frustrated, and something needs to be done because there's a school right there, if those people are trafficking kids, I'm afraid they're going to grab some of those children on the way to or from school. And I've been talking to the parents, I've called the school, I called the, um, people who are on the police force for the schools, I, I, I don't know what more to do, I really don't know what, what more to do. Something needs to be done. And everybody says, well, you should just move, nobody's going to drive me out of my house, I got news for them, because I work nights to pay for that house, do you hear me? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Deborah Edwards.
I'm glad Ms. Mendez mentioned the murder on Taylor, because that's what I'm here about too. First of all, I attended a visitation this evening for the young man who was murdered, uh, relatively behind my house. Uh, I, I had a personal need to tell his mother that he did not suffer, that I heard the shots and watched him fall dead. This is a month or so ago, about six weeks, I was here talking to you about a house at 435 Taylor, in conjunction with the new Habitat House that was being built on our block, um, and I was complaining about a property that has been transferred at least three times in the past year. Uh, it, this is the house that was involved with the murder. Um, you know, it was an expected outcome, and I'm told that by code, that there's nothing that can be done. I know what needs to be done, all of you know what needs to be done, the house needs to be torn down, and those people need to be, go camping. Uh, because they have refused all help, um, maybe they need to go camping in Nashville, I've offered to buy them a ticket to leave, uh, but, but I can't have this in my neighborhood. I, I spent a lot of time this past week trying to reassure Habitat for Humanity that their volunteers are safe, um, and this was not a random act, it was related to drugs. Again, I, I, like Ms. Mendez, I stood here six weeks ago and told you that this was going, something was going to happen. I have been telling you for two years that something was going to happen, this house has been condemned, no one seems to be able to do anything. I have talked to the code judge about it, I've talked to Sasha about it, talked to Mike Hogan about it, I've talked to our community police officer, and no one seems to be able to do what needs to be done, is just tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Edwards. Next person signed up to speak is Mr. Aaron Edwards.
I'm sure you can, uh, guess what I'm going to talk about, same thing, the shooting relatively behind my house, I live next door. What I'd like to do first is present a cross-section of our neighborhood. Obviously, you know my mom, she is the president of our local NIA, um, she's familiar with most of you. Myself, I have a PhD in computer engineering, and I work for a local media company. My neighbor directly next door to me is a teacher. Our neighborhood is a cross-section of a number of up and coming, you know, we are not a bad neighborhood. We've had a bad situation, this situation has continued to go on and on. Now, the question is, will we allow the neighborhood to fall, or are we going to make a difference? Because what's going to, what level of attrition is going to occur first? Are the bad people going to kill each other off faster than the good people will leave? Because that's where we're at, as a lot of the people, we have a new home, Habitat for Humanity Home. You know, I'm sure those people are wondering about the sense of moving to our neighborhood now, this is bad, this is a horrible, horrible thing. And I hear you talking about new laws, more laws, there are books upon books upon books with laws upon laws upon laws that have no teeth, that are not being enforced over and over. Why make more laws that will simply be ignored, that will simply be washed over and not used? There are solutions. I've even come up with a potential solution that the city could implement. It's a qualification, when you have these homes which are in such dire disrepair, how do you make a determination as to whether or not the house can be repaired? Well, you have to qualify things. One of the ways I would say is the city should investigate the prospect of eliminating, fining, simple fines, and they should go to a bond system, that when a house is cited, that it is a simple thing to look, what does a roof cost, what does siding cost, what do windows cost? These are basic, uh, architectural things, you can put those on a sheet of paper, add up that number, what is it going to cost this person to rehabilitate this home to the bare minimum of code in materials only? And then ask, can this person afford that? And you then make the person put a bond upon that property to the city that they pay, 1%, 5%, 10%, whatever the city decides, that bond could then be refunded upon completion or even significant motion towards rehabilitation. And if not, if the person cannot meet that bond, then you can move forward with condemnation, eviction, and demolition, that, that would be a solution that can be implemented to eliminate this problem. This is not just a Fortin-Taylor problem, this is a problem throughout the city. You hear this over and over, we don't need new laws, we just need to modify the ones we have, and we need to qualify those who can and those who cannot. That, or else we are going to face a situation where all the people who can will leave, and then you'll be stuck with the city full of those who cannot. And we are currently in a national economic boom, every economic boom throughout history has been followed by a downturn. We are in the, that, we are most likely at the very peak, how will the city deal with the downturn? If this is our peak, what's ahead? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, if I could make just a couple of quick comments, I, I really appreciate your, your coming to, to talk with us today, um, all of you, about, uh, these tragic issues we've had in our community. I would ask that you call your state representative and share your thoughts with them as well. Uh, most of the property rights laws in the state of Kansas are governed at a state level, and they significantly hamper the city's ability to make changes in certain cases. I, I'm not trying to pass the buck to anyone, but those representatives need to hear your story as well, because a lot of the property rights issues that we deal with as a city are governed by state law, which our hands are tied on. So if you would please call and share your story with them as well, I would greatly appreciate it. In the meantime...
So are you asking us to just go home?
No, ma'am, I'm not at all, I'm asking you to, in addition, I appreciate the comments you shared with us today, and I'm certain we'll do what we can, but we're, we're holding to state law just as well as you are, and there's only some things, there's some things the city can't do with regards to personal property rights, we have very, very strict laws about that in the state of Kansas, so there's some things we can't do because the state has set those laws, and I'm asking if you would share your, your testimony tonight with your state representative, and tell them how important it is to give local municipalities control over the property within city borders, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
It's, it's not meant for a back and forth, but, um, there is another person signed up to speak, Mr. Claude Belshi.
I would rather, uh, actually choose not to speak tonight, I've been working with Brent Trout, uh, via email, and to give the city police chief, Ann Bren, a chance to respond privately, uh, before it becomes, I do believe it's an issue that should be brought up here, but I owe them, uh, and it is, uh, I do agree with Ms. Edwards and Mr. Edwards, uh, there is plenty of rules and laws that the city does have control of and can enforce, and will not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have concluded the public's, uh, comment session at this time, however, we do have a need to adjourn into an executive session, if the city attorney could please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes, a consultation with the city's legal counsel, to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to potential litigation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present, members of the governing body, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Chief of Litigation Shelley Starr, Budget and Performance Manager Nick Hawkins, Associate City Attorney Nick Jefferson, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
We have, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz, a second by the Deputy Mayor, we now proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes, we will allow a few minutes for the room to be emptied, again, like the city attorney said, there will be no further action taken in this meeting, um, and after that, we will just shut down, we will come back to adjourn the meeting, and we are getting ready to start our session. We have come out of executive session, but we seem to have a need to re-enter the executive session for a period not to exceed 15 minutes with the same parameters that we had in the initial, uh, time that we went in, so at this point in time, if we would have a motion to, Deputy Mayor?
Move to extend the, uh, executive session by 15 minutes with the same parameters.
We have a motion and a second, to not exceed 15 minutes, um, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing, want to oppose?
No.
Oh, seeing none, the motion passes unanimously, we will now recess into executive session, again, not to exceed 15 minutes.
But, the, the next...
There has been no action taken in the, in the executive session, now that being done, the meeting is officially adjourned.